Endredak?
Thank you.
You're in charge, I guess.
Oh. Thank you, Council President Person. Council members, my name is Priti Shridhar. I'm the Deputy Public Affairs Administrator. And it is my pleasure to introduce you to Benita Horn. Benita will be giving us an update on the project on building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. Benita was here a few months ago to give her preliminary update on what she had found in her assessment, and today she's going to build upon that and give you a briefing on the work that's been done in the last few months. As you know, the city of Renton, the diversity in the city of Renton has been growing significantly in the past few years. And since 2008, it has been a priority for the city to build and to be an inclusive city, to offer opportunities for all, to engage our community, and make sure that everyone has access to all our programs and services. In fact, our commitment to this has been so strong that it is part of our business plan. It's a mission statement and a specific goal in our business plan with achievable objectives. One of the things, as you know, we did several years ago and have been building on that year after year, is to build a network of liaisons, of members from the community, the community liaisons, who have provided us access to their organizations, to their members, and in turn have also brought forward, you know, the interests and requests from the organization. So, there's a lot of things we've done in the past few years to build on this relationship, to increase our access, and to have really several different accomplishments. I will not go through these again, you know, I have had the opportunity to share these with you. But what I wanted to kind of take from there is, earlier this year, as the, you know, city's priorities for the year were, you know, once again reinforced and reiterated, one of the priorities that the mayor stated is to find a way to ensure that we have opportunities for all in our community, to understand the needs of our diverse communities, and then to work on issues related to homelessness, vulnerable populations, you know, and human trafficking in Renton, et cetera. So, all in that bigger, broader area of what can we do for our community. So, as part of the efforts, especially in terms of looking at the diversity in our community, equity, you know, we engaged Benita Horn to help us with this important initiative. Benita is an expert, local, regional, national, in organizational development, in equity, and understanding systems, and she's just been amazing to work with us. Just to go briefly over her scope of work, you know, she started to do, and, you know, look at and expand our stakeholder groups, do an in-depth analysis of community needs, do a systems analysis of what it is that the city is doing both internally and externally, and look at, you know, the processes and the foundation. She's also brought and done for us already, but, you know, her scope was to do workshops, training. And with that, not only bring awareness, but also build capacity within the city. And, you know, one of her goals is to create a comprehensive roadmap for us, so that the work that we're doing, we can build upon and enhance the efforts to ensure we build an exclusive city and have a sustainable plan that, you know, doesn't end because one person goes away or whatever, but really have it in the fabric of what we do as a city. And then finally, with final recommendations on what we need to get there. So, these were the, you know, this is kind of a broad scope of work for Benita, and it's really our pleasure to share with you, not just, you know, some of the things that she's come up with in terms of recommendations, but really a fantastic list of checkmarks of things that, you know, she's been able to help accomplish in the time she's been here, so.
Thank you, Priti. Thank you. I really want to say, strictly in my consultant's hat, it's been a very engaging perspective for me to work with the city of Renton. I was brought in to assist the city in advancing work on inclusion. And it's really been quite affirming to see the seriousness with which the city leadership and staff take the goal of inclusion. Just from my observations and experiences so far, some of the elements that I see, that I don't always see in organizations that I work with, is that there is clear and consistent support and messaging, both from the mayor and from all of the top leadership, the administrators, the heads of each of the departments. I also see, as you look down further in the organizations, real clarity among staff who feel both supported by their leaders and confident in actually leading actions themselves and initiating actions themselves that lead toward the goal of inclusion. And the other thing that's quite rewarding is just seeing the bias for action. So, it's not, there's less of "let's think about it" and more about "let's get it done." And so, some of the, and that's one of the reasons that we've been able to, that the city's been able to move forward. When I came before you in June, I had just completed the internal assessment and gave you the update on that. And so, we're almost through now with the external assessment, not in its entirety. And so, this really is the second in a series of periodic progress reports that I'll be providing to you. Initially, for my role, we scoped out, you know, a contract with a timeline and some specific tasks. But I really want to emphasize, and I know all of you understand, but I still want to emphasize the fact that this is not a project, it's a process. There was work well underway before I got here, and the work will be ongoing. And so, one of the overarching goals of my work is to deepen capacity in the city, as Priti said, to sustain this work. And so, much of my work, the work that I've been doing, has been in collaboration with folks in the city, so that we have that deepening capacity. So, with that, I'd like to just share with you what I've heard as I've gone outside of the city and talked with stakeholders who are residents, community partners, and what I heard back from them, both in the terms of strengths and opportunities. I had free rein to identify the stakeholders, and so it's really been a discovery process. I started with some organizations that I knew. I've been, met with the community liaisons and working with Priti to do that and to expand actually our community liaison base, because not all of our communities are yet well represented in that forum. I had identified many partners who are in human services, education, business, and as always, just as when I talk to all of you, I ask, "Who else do you think I should talk to?" So, the list goes on, and some people simply got in contact with me and said, "I'd like to talk to you." I also had a chance to attend many of the neighborhood picnics, as Marcy and Ed know, and just talked to people. And I was asking all of them, just as I asked you, what they knew about the city's goal of inclusion, to the extent that they knew, what they felt was working well. That's what you see as the strengths. What they felt could work better, that's what you see as the opportunities. So, the very same questions. And you'll see periodically a little yin-yang symbol at the end of it, of a strength or opportunity. And I use that just to indicate that shows, that's in alignment with what I heard internally with the city. So, the first strength, this is not in any priority order, but one of the strengths that I heard was that the city did have a goal of inclusion. From some of the partners I talked to who are in local governments, strongly the perception came forward that Renton is further along inclusion and has more leadership support than some of the other cities in the region, and they saw that as a strength. In terms of opportunities, some of the, there were a lot of questions that were raised as I talked to residents and stakeholders. They wanted to know, did we really, had we done our foundation work for inclusion? Were there policies in place? Had resources been identified? They felt that if we had a goal of inclusion, they were wondering why they didn't yet see it reflected in the city's employee base, in council committees, boards, and commissions, whether there were diversity workshops going on for the city and so forth. There were a number of people who felt that there should be more focus on racial equity. And even, while acknowledging that there's many forms of, many areas in which to address equity and many forms of oppression, that one significant form is racial, and that was highlighted by a number of people that I talked to. And then they also wanted to know how we were measuring, what we were using to measure progress toward that goal. So, those were opportunities. And please stop me at any, I know I talk fast, so stop me at any time if you have questions. The next strength area was the diversity of the city of Renton itself. A number of people that I talked to, residents, told me that they moved to Renton because of the diversity here. So, that was definitely seen as a strength. Opportunities that came up, again, that the city staff reflect the diversity of the community, to engage diverse communities in all aspects of government, which was also seen as an opportunity, supporting the growth of business in the various cultural communities.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Benita, for the benefit of people that are at home, I think that it's important that we use a language that's more commonly understood, and I would suspect that many people don't recognize using the word "opportunity" with a disparity. So, when you say things about opportunity of employment, then that may register for some people, some viewers, that that's working well, when in fact, it isn't.
Right.
So, I would just ask that we can just put it in a context and frame what you're saying, both for us and, so that our home viewers can understand, that what we're really saying is that we can do better in our hiring, we can do better in our contracting with minority business enterprises, and we can do better in these areas, and therefore we view those as opportunities that we can do much better in. But as it sits right now, we have disparities in those categories.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will do that. Thank you. So, another opportunity for improvement was seen to as increase in contracting with small disadvantaged women and minority-owned businesses. Another opportunity for improvement, more cultural events and more ESL classes, that came up a number of times.
I have a question on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Who thinks we need more ESL and where?
Well, we, you know, we do today have ESL classes.
Are you talking about the city?
No. Well, the city partners.
Right.
With community agencies to provide those.
Yeah.
The library is involved in that process. Renton Technical is involved in ESL classes. And there still is a need. So, for example, I talked to some folks at the Multi Service Center that is actually based in Federal Way, but serves, you know, the whole, this whole geographical area. And so, they're continually looking for venues. They've started, they've been offered and use a venue, for example, at the Chamber of Commerce to hold classes. They've also worked with Renton Housing to have classes there. So, it's about getting the classes, the frequency, and the locations in sync with the needs of the community. So, this is not to say that there aren't any, there are some, but the opportunity for improvement would be to expand that.
And I would add to that, many churches have ESL.
Yes.
Classes as well.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, the next area was economic development. And what was consistently cited as a good indicator of economic development was the development of businesses at the Landin, the Landin in general. What we're seeing as opportunities for improvement was the development of small and/or minority-owned businesses, the development of downtown Renton, the development of larger grocery stores in residential neighborhoods, the development of large businesses that provide more employment in Renton. A lot of Rentonites, I guess that would be appropriate, would like to live and work here, and more affordable housing. And there were several comments about the fact that housing costs seemed to be rising in Renton. And that was noted. And some people said that they worked here but couldn't afford to live here. So, that was another way in which that was framed. The next area of analysis is looking at the fact that just Renton is a growing city. That was seen as a strength. And I might say, let's see, how could I best characterize that? One of the ways that, and this was a quote from one of the residents I interviewed, "Renton has a small-town feel and a big-town heart." And they would like to see it continue in that vein. So, that it was indicated that it was not so large that we experienced some of the challenges that larger cities do, that it is large enough, however, to host a variety of cultural events and activities, and that there is a large and growing population of young people. There are actually more than 25 percent of our population is under age 20 in Renton, and that's growing. Opportunities for improvement, again, increase in diversity of businesses, nurturing and expansion of the art and cultural community, improve public transportation for, especially for clients and seniors who are trying to get to various agencies for services and so forth. Activities and jobs for youth, and particularly youth of color, and that came up repeatedly. More and less services for homeless, and that came up on both sides of the continuum. So, some people wanted to see more services, for example, more showers that people could access during the day, was one example shared. Others wanted to see less services because they felt that we should not have so many services that attracted homeless people to this community. So, that weighed in on both sides. The next area of analysis is, was, that came up repeatedly, the theme of community events, activities, that are either sponsored or co-sponsored by the city. So, some of the examples cited were the Neighborhood Association picnics, farmer's market, Coulon Park, particularly because of the nature of the family orientation of events there, the proximity of community centers and parks, and the Housing Repair Assistance Program. The opportunities for improvement were gaps in a deeper knowledge and information about city services, activities, opportunities. And I would just say in a personal note, people would say, gee, we need, like several people said, "Well, we need a day shelter for women." And I said, "Well, did you know that we had one? Center of Hope in City Hall?" No, they didn't know anything about it. But how do I get in touch with them? I'd like to volunteer and so forth. So, there were gaps in knowledge that people had and wondered why we didn't have services that we in fact do have, they simply did not know about. And so, in general, I guess my observation is that there seemed a sense that people are more interested in services that they have an immediate need for than perhaps absorbing the wide array of information that goes out to the community in so many ways. So, like, if it's not on my radar, it just kind of flies by. And then the other opportunity for improvement is that people, residents in particular, would like to do a personal relationship with city leaders. So, they would like to see, as my children would say, more of their city leaders up close and personal, so that they had a chance to get to know them as people and establish a relationship.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that, was there a particular area or group of people?
The reference was usually more toward all of you, the administrators, you know, so knowing the people who, they were the people that they identified as the leaders of the city, and simply that they would like to see more. So, for example, this came up at one of the picnics, and I said, "Well, do you realize that, you know, right over there are two of your council members and have you talked to them?" "Oh, no, I haven't. No, I didn't know that." So, you know, it's interesting. It's kind of part of our human dynamic.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Greg.
And that is, I hear that echoed throughout the community. And the reason is because we've got, we are an emerging, dynamic city. We are rapidly becoming just so diverse in so many different ways. But yet, we have a construct of traditional methods of how we communicate that are more easily navigated by our mainstream populations. We've got newer groups that don't tune into those same channels. So, as you just stated, we could be putting a lot of information out there, and it just goes right by them because they're not tuned into those channels. So, creating more creative methods of how we engage with our community, the broad community, everyone, that means we've got to learn how to do some new things and do those new things differently, so that we can distribute that information to everybody throughout our communities.
Yeah. You know, and you're absolutely right on point. And, you know, I've talked to a couple of different departments that are really zoning in on that particular need. Fire and emergency services, for example, is piloting a survey with the community. I believe they started with the Latino community, and then they're seeing what their success is and fine-tuning it before they move on to other communities. And one of the things they're asking is, you know, "In what ways would you like to receive information? You know, in what languages, in what ways? Would you like text? Would you like, you know, there's a whole list and then a place to put 'or other.'" And so, they're really hoping to get their arms around exactly what you mentioned, what are the best and more, most desirable ways to get information. And some of it, as you know, especially in many of our cultural communities, is best person-to-person.
Right. That's a big part of it, is creating, developing relationships and understanding that, you know, one size does not fit all, and that there's more labor involved, and it's a whole new dynamic that we've got to invest in and just really shift the paradigm in how we do that.
And if I may, I don't want to take away from Benita, because she's going to talk about this in a few minutes, but on that note, we've actually, you know, again, working with the members of our diverse communities, both the existing community liaisons, as well as with new partners that we set up. We're looking to, and we already have one of them that's, you know, providing us a potential date, where they would coordinate a large meeting of people from their community and their membership, you know, ahead of time to kind of help identify what are some things that you want to talk about. And then we would go there, you know, to be invited by them to hear about their needs and to share, you know, some of the things that we're doing. So, more, and we'll come to you, whereas our contacts and leaders are actually setting these up, and we plan to do a lot of those over, you know, a series of a few months to really, you know, be, to get that connection and that communication going, so.
And who would be attending those? Us? Like a town hall?
We'll basically wait to hear back from the community if they have some specific areas of needs, or if it would be maybe the police chief, the mayor, you know, once we get that set up, we'll be open. There'll be meetings that'll be open. Some of them might be initially at department level, saying, "Okay, we just want information on this area." So, we're still working through those details.
Good.
So, the next area, a theme that came up, was partnerships with local businesses, institutions, organizations. That was seen as a strength. There are a number of people or in different, many different organizations that I talked to, who clearly see the city as a partner. The opportunities for improvement would be, as expressed by those same stakeholders, would be to deepen and expand partnerships to address opportunities, specifically in areas such as youth, contracting, job development, employment. Another opportunity for improvement is to facilitate partnerships, that the city would take the role of facilitating partnerships between cities, schools, businesses, and community organizations, to focus on common areas of interest and need. And also that this, that there would be, that the city would assist in increasing understanding and diminishing barriers among the many diverse communities. And that came up again and again, and particularly as I met, as Priti Shridhar and I met with the community liaisons, they feel that whole opportunities are missed among their communities to partner with each other, connect with each other, and they would like to see what kind of role the city could take in helping to facilitate that. We, I also say, have also, since I've been here, been able to respond to requests from some of the community partners, there is an ESL, ELL group that meets every other month and who wanted some, to know more about what the city was doing on inclusion and what they could then take back to their respective organizations. Luther's Table, which is a community center, as well as a center for, at two churches, met with them. Again, they wanted to know what they could do and talked about some of the things they were doing and how they could partner with the city to do more. And also, the Renton River Days Board had a very similar request. And so, you know, facilitating that communication is so essential, so that, you know, we all have an idea of what each other is doing. The, another theme area that came up in the analysis was simply, that we had a well-run city government. That came up again and again, that the mayor and council do well at managing the budget. And this was a shared perception that came up from people from many different cultural communities. In those comments, there were also many specific comments praising the mayor, acknowledging his, what they perceive as his business background as an asset, and just a good job of managing the city's resources. There was a perception that the city is responsive to needs. I spoke to one woman who spoke, for example, very little English, and I fortunately, unfortunately speak very little Spanish, but we were able to have a conversation. And one of the things she shared with me is that when she has had to do business with the city, there is always someone there who can speak her first language.
Wow.
So, she felt that that was a strength. And a lot of people watch you on television, even though they may not physically be here. I don't know what the ratings are, but you're obviously, the council meetings are a very well-watched program. The opportunities for improvement, and this was interesting, the residents felt that they could do more to inform themselves about the city and to take advantage of opportunities to get involved. And then there were a lot of comments that, where people made that they see the Renton City Hall more as a place of business than a welcoming environment, and weren't sure that they would feel comfortable coming here. But they would like to see the city leaders come to their community so that they had more face-to-face contact.
Invite us.
Invite us. Yes. Well, I'm getting to that.
Oh.
That's next. Thank you for that lead-in, councilmember. So, the, the next slide looks at the endeavors already underway, and I want to underscore again, there were a lot of endeavors underway when I came. And hopefully, there'll be, you know, I can help assist with some, and there'll also be a large number after I leave. But just in the short few months that I've been here, I just want to say again, this shows the city's bias for action. So, here are some of the things that have happened. There is, we are in the process of a citywide inclusion workshop for all employees in the city, and we will, we also have, some of our community partners have also requested attendance, and they'll be participating in those sessions. One of the, one of the strengths that I see of those workshops is that they're co-facilit, I co-facilitate with city administrators. Now, typically, when I've gone to work in organizations, and co-facilitating is part of the capacity building strategy, usually, typically, I co-facilitate with someone from the training department or a mid-level manager. And in Renton, the administrator stepped up in that role, which sends a whole different message to employees about the priority of inclusion, and then seeing their department heads modeling in that role. So, just personally, as a consultant, I just want to give you kudos for that level of support. Already, we started in September, already, we've had about 200 people, employees have attended, so we're about a third of the way through the employee body. The content of these workshops affirms the goal of inclusion and identifies systemic barriers to achieving the goal of inclusion. And we, and there are many systemic barriers. We started with the barrier of racism, simply because research tells us that in the United States, that race is the greatest predictor of success in every area of life, whether that be community vitality, whether it be residents' health, education, housing, employment, income, criminal justice, economic development, and so forth. So, the workshop explores the history of institutional racism in the United States and the current reality of the legacy that that history has left with us today. reality of the legacy that that history has left with us today. So there are plans under discussion for future education sessions that will focus on other barriers to inclusion. And I'm encouraged to hear that there are council members who are also interested in going through that workshop and I'm looking forward to that opportunity.
Counsel, I just want the council to know is that Priti and I talked about having the council have this go to the, I was planning to go to one of the inclusion trainings, you know, with the employees, but the general understanding I got was, was best if they felt that we would have our own so that we, nobody would be intimidated by us being there. So I'm assuming that sometime late this year, early next year, we'll have that training for the whole council, which I think is very, very important. And I, I'd like to sign up, but then thank goodness we have smart people.
Julius is helping coordinate that. And one of the things that we found also, like we've done a couple of different trainings specifically for the police department, the others we've done with all employees. And there are advantages to both, but there certainly are advantages when you have a specific group that you can tailor, you know, the whole facilitation to address, you know, what they face, their needs, their experiences. And so there's that richness. So as policymakers, that's something that we think, you know, just even as part of the training, that's a strength that you can, you know, we can, you know, set it up in a way that is your best advantage, so.
One of, I don't know if you'll recall, but one of the areas that came up in the internal assessment was a desire to have more ways and means to really measure the impact of the activities and programs that the city has sponsored over the years, directed toward inclusion. And so we started with kind of a baby step, which is something called the Inclusion Sign-in Sheet, which is an optional sign-in sheet that residents would complete when they come to city, to meetings, events, and so forth, and/or register online for different events. And it's, there's an optional area on the online version as well. And we're simply asking for some basic information such as their culture, cultural identity, their language that is spoken at home, their age, gender, zip code. So it, you know, we started September, the city started citywide September 1 in collecting this information. And so over time, you will have some actual information that will tell you, are there, is it, you know, are the activities and events touching all of the communities? Are there some that still are less engaged than others? So it'll be a way it really strategically determining where focus needs to go. Another endeavor underway is development of an Equity Lens tool that would identify unintentional or inadvertent barriers in policies or practices. The Equity Lens Task Force is made up of administrators in the city and the initial focus use of the lens will focus on hiring and contracting, which were two areas that bubbled to the surface in the internal assessment. And they're also looking at other ways, other uses, to identify other uses for the Equity Lens. And I've also been working collaboratively with human resources to begin to gather some data for a systems assessment in hiring practices to see what barriers might be inherent there. And I've been working collaboratively with administrative services to research best practices for increasing contracting with disadvantaged, women-owned, minority-owned businesses that don't take us outside of the limits of I-200. And there's a lot of different, I just, you know, it's almost weekly I see, you know, kind of different actions that really support inclusion. For example, today, Human Services released an SOQ, a Statement of Qualifications Request from Consultants Capable of Providing Professional Services to Improve Capacity of Nonprofit Agencies. And last Friday, it was actually sent to a wide array of community partners, various cultural communities, and so forth, to get it out to the widest array of consultants as possible. The other thing, I know that we're looking at hiring, but I've also observed some practices of note, both in the fire department and in the police department, and they've been trying a number of different things. The police department recently held a booth at the, I always say JBLM, but the Joint Base Louis McCord Job Fair where they're trying to place returning vets. And they thought that might be one way to increase their applicant pool with women and people from diverse backgrounds and ethnicities. The fire department did a small pilot last year and during Heart Health Month at one of the high schools, now, you know, while some of the personnel were doing the testing, others were going to classrooms and talking about careers in fire and emergency services in Renton. And so they're going to be expanding that this year. Another thing that I've seen since I've been here and been involved in is simply deepening our relationship with stakeholders in collaboration with Priti and Deputy Public Affairs Administrator. We've been meeting one-on-one with community liaisons and also just expanding that base and reaching out to communities that we didn't feel were well-represented in that community liaison base, such as East Indian, Vietnamese, African-American. We feel that more can be done there. And so we're working on deepening that. And also based on input from the liaisons themselves, we're looking at developing criteria and guidelines to formalize that relationship so that it really has a more of a substantive base and purpose and is a better two-way conduit, both from the communities to the city and from the city to the community. And then just deepening of partnering opportunities. The city is already responding to requests from partners that came up during my assessment in education and in business to increase interest in public service as a career and to expand outreach and recruitment for city job openings. And as a matter of fact, I'll be meeting with some folks from, with Priti, some folks from fire, and I are meeting with some folks from Renton School District next month to have, to go deepen that conversation. There are also plans underway to partner with other local governments in Puget Sound for periodic gatherings. We're finding this, as I reach out and make connections with them, most of our sister governments are involved in some form of inclusion, diversity, equity, racial equity. And what's bubbled up is a desire to have periodic gatherings where we can learn from and support each other. And there was always, there also the acknowledgement that would give us a deeper collective impact since our residents really don't adhere to city boundaries. You know, they might live in one city, work in another, participate in events in another, and so that would allow them to have some more of a consistent experience. And then the next slide is just looking at, you know, looking out into the future, some endeavors that are currently in discussion and planning. A job fair focusing on jobs in Renton, some community-based, like from grassroots up, festival events celebrating cultural diversity and responding to the request to begin to help diminish walls between those communities. And then mayor, administrators, consul, community meetings. And the city has already received one request with a tentative date for such a meeting in the East Indian community. And in the contacts that Priti and I've made, we've also received desire to extend invites for such forums from the Latino community, the Ukrainian community, the East African, Filipino, and several faith-based communities. So I think that there is definitely interest and they'd like to host and create a space in their venues for city leaders to come and meet with community members. Then going forward, where we go from here, I'll be working to continue the expansion of stakeholder group and analysis of needs. We'll be continuing work on the Equity Lens and systems assessments, drafting a comprehensive roadmap that does enhance the city goal of building an inclusive city, as well as formulating recommendations for resources and infrastructure needed for sustainability. So I'll be back with, to you with that information in our, the next progress update.
Thank you. That was very, very good.
Yeah, very interesting.
Lot of good work.
You've been working hard.
I would have normally have, most likely cut somebody else off, but this is such an interesting topic because we have another topic yet to go tonight. And I hope we can get it done in the next few minutes. But I want to thank you very, very much. This has been very, very interesting. I'm very looking forward to being in, having the workshop. I think that's going to be, I think that's really going to be exciting for the council.
Thank you.
Benita, when is the next report scheduled?
Workshop?
No, not the next workshop, but when do you plan on getting back to us with your next analysis?
I'll probably be right after the first of the year. And, you know, be working with your calendar and with the chief administrator.
Right.
But that's what I'm anticipating. And because we do want you to be informed and do want you to be in a position to receive recommendations from all this.
And I am, I am signed up for one day's workshop too.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you for your time and your interest and support.
Yeah, I guess I, I guess, you know, the discussion of being signed up, Greg, for the workshop is, that my understanding is that you, as the presenters, would prefer that the council not attend the workshops individually. And I don't know if I misunderstood that because my understanding in talking with Priti, that there was, in talking with the employees, that there was some concern that the higher you got up in the city, the less they were willing to be, speak freely. And based on that, Greg, since we're going to have it for the whole council, I would ask that...
And I would decline your request because I know that administrators are going to be co-facilitating with Mrs. Horn and they are superiors to their staff members also. So the same would apply there. And I've, I have a lens for this kind of thing. I do trainings with my other day job for these types of audiences. So I believe you mean there'll be no discomfort that I would present to any of the employees there. In fact, I think they'd be happy to see me there. In fact, Benita did mention that earlier when she mentioned it, so I do plan on going.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to get, clear the air.
The very first training we had with the members from the police department, for a very short while, the mayor attended, just even to give an introduction. And then he actually left because he felt that maybe, you know, the conversations didn't flow so freely. And we did see that there was a loosening of people's inhibitions. Plus, like I said, we've tried to do some customizing as it makes sense. There is an advantage if it was a training for all the council, but it's a decision that the council will make. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And I guess now my next question is, we're, no, I'm off on this, I'm on the next subject, I apologize, is, our next topic is on the master plan for adopting the Sunset Neighborhood Park Master Plan. And we have about seven minutes and I don't know if that is enough time for the council to digest. I mean, we've been involved in this all the way along. So I would look at the council, would you rather that we postpone it or?
I might, I might try and fit it in to see how far we can get.
Mr. Chair, I would offer that, yes, it's important for us to have ample time to digest it, but we've got viewers at home also that might want to know more about this. So I guess the question that comes to my mind is that would the amount of time that we have left to cover this be sufficient enough to provide enough information to our viewing audience at home to thoroughly understand it as well?
I guess I have a question.
Okay.
What's the purpose of this tonight? Is it to inform the public? Because certainly as I look through, it's, we've had this numerous times.
Right.
Okay, council, president, members of the council, the purpose of tonight's meeting, it's a culmination of a nine-month public process and it's the third and final briefing of the third and final open house to adopt the preliminary master plan.
I, you know, I just think we've discussed this enough in the council, so let's go ahead and we'll see what we get done.
Yeah. I think we've been kept well-informed and I'd be willing to give it a go.
And I think the public has had a whole host of opportunity to be informed. And as many times as we've heard it, it's all been on TV, so they've had plenty of time to see it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. So I'd like to thank you tonight for providing me the opportunity to present to you. My name's Leslie Betlock, Parks Planning and Natural Resources Director with the Community Services Department. Brief overview, the Sunset Neighborhood Park Master Plan is part of a much larger Sunset Plan to Action, EIS, a 269-acre area in the Highlands outlined. In this dashed area, there's Metalcrest Early Learning Center and North Highlands Neighborhood Park and Metalcrest Accessible Playground to the north, Highlands Park and Neighborhood Center and Highlands Elementary to the south. And right here is the topic of discussion, the future 3.1 Neighborhood Park. So we formed an interdepartmental team with representatives from the, across all departments in the city, as well as stakeholders group that included the interdepartmental team and businesses, the library, private development, multiple organizations. And we held two meetings and those meetings were to establish park parameters, primarily parking location and configuration, accessibility, the regional stormwater facility that our Public Works Department will be starting construction on in January. And we identified key park components, which included active and passive recreation areas, pedestrian pathways, plazas, performance areas, and restrooms and fitness for children through adults. We have had three open house meetings. The first meeting was in May and we presented four, what I call bubble diagrams, which is more of a relationship between different park activities and received feedback. And we had our second open house meeting and then used that feedback to provide more scaled, detailed drawings called schematic plans that focused on functionality, usability, adjacencies, security, safety, and aesthetics. Our final open house meeting, and I want to say that each time that we had a meeting, it was a series of refinements. And so there was a lot of going over what had been previously presented and the feedback that we received that was used to develop the next phase of design and it was just refinement upon refinement. So we had our third open house meeting in September and we started off presenting the, what was presented at the second open house meeting, and that was the three schematic plans. And I will say that we did take your feedback that we received at the last committee, the whole briefing, to reach out to the school district and try to distribute more invitations at the different schools in the area and we successfully did do that. So thank you for that suggestion. So these were the three schematic plans and there were, there's several commonalities in these plans. There's, all three plans have a north-south connection. All three plans have restrooms, two children's play areas, adult fitness centers, loop trail system, restroom, performance space. But as you can see, one is quite angular, one is really quite free-flowing, and one is a combination of the two. So the feedback that we received from the second open house meeting, the people liked the art locations, the north-south connection, flexible diverse spaces, play areas and fitness centers, natural-looking boulder water feature. And those comments, actually all the comments over the last eight months at that point, were utilized to develop the preliminary master plan. And this was presented at the third open house meeting in September. And it reflects a culmination of all that feedback. a culmination of all that feedback to date. And so, this is the, the regional stormwater facility in the rain gardens. It's got two children's play areas, adjacent adult fitness center, plaza area with water feature, performance, open space area, a good connection, a plaza area adjacent to the library, a looped trail system to promote fitness and activity throughout the park facility. And we had boards which helped people visualize what could be included in the facility, and these, too, were culmination of all the prior public processes that we went through. And people really particularly liked this water feature, which was boulders with turtles and frogs on top of the boulders, and water was coming out, and kids could play on it. This is an example of adult fitness center. The restroom's quite modern, people really, really liked this type of restroom feature. And we had, of course, some questions and comments. The key ones were lighting, people really wanted to see low-level lighting, they didn't want streetlights in the park. There was a question about the turtle sculpture at the existing North Highlands Library, will that be retained? And we said, yes, not at this facility, but the city does have plans to relocate that. Will there be enough parking? We talked about the 43 stalls that would be included in the surface parking in a walkable Whether seating would be provided under the pergolas, and we said, yes. There's not a walkability score for the park yet, because it's not constructed. People suggested mileage markers, excellent idea. We had children attend the last meeting, and they wanted to have swings in the park, and that was an excellent suggestion. So as you can see, there is a little bit of funding that's required for this park. 5.9 million if the park is constructed in one complete phase. It always costs more to phase construction. We estimate 4 million for Phase 1. It would allow for a fully usable park that would include, well, let me say what it won't include, because that's a little bit easier. It won't include the pergola around the performance play area. Art would be included in Phase 2. We are applying for grants, getting ready to apply for grants, and we've also applied 3.6 million for legislative, state legislative funding. So we're working toward it. This is a sketch, a perspective sketch, showing what the park would look like looking across the water feature toward the fitness play area and the library. This is a perspective of the open space play area. We took this to our Parks Commission, and they recommended that the council adopt the preliminary master plan. And that's where we are tonight, and our council president...
I think we can cut to the chase at this point. Are there any questions?
Good job.
Yeah, I really like it.
Great job in a short period of time, I appreciate it. And I do have a committee report, and with the approval of the council, I'll sign it and we'll present it, that new business this evening. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have about three minutes before we have a very important council meeting coming up. So the council, committee holds it, is adjourned for a couple of minutes.
Forty firefighters and police officers whose service...